Joseph Di Benedetto.
Good evening, yes, here.
Wen Yu.
Present.
Anne Marie Knabel.
Present.
Joseph Chow.
Present.
Sung Young Lee.
Present.
Bian M. I don't see him. Rashmi Krishn Raj.
Present.
Michelle Frederick.
Present.
Pamela Altamourino. And Catherine Pappas.
Present.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. We're able to move forward and make decisions as a council. So I want to welcome everyone and thank you for joining us for this special meeting. The meeting was called for two very particular purposes, so I'd like to stay on the agenda and keep it limited to those two purposes. The quickest one is the one regarding the vacancy. And if, as you recall, our bylaws provide that if a member is absent, has an unexcused absence for three meetings, then there is ground to have that member removed as a council member. We are speaking particularly about Pamela Altamourino, who has not been to any of our meetings. I did never, I never received any correspondence from Pamela, whether or not she intended to appear or not. I know that Carly had reached out to her on numerous occasions and there was no response. So this, she has missed three meetings. The, the last meeting, which was held last week at PS 107, we did not have a quorum, so we were not able to vote on her vacancy. So at this time, I will, if, if someone else wants to make the motion, I can make the motion to, to eliminate her seat so we can find the new council member that will fill in that position. So, does anyone make the motion to do so? Fine, so then I will make the motion to remove Pamela Altamourino as a CEC council member for having three absences on our committee. And I ask if anyone here will second the motion.
I second the motion.
So for the record, I have made the motion and Wendy Yu had seconded the motion to remove Pamela Altamourino as CEC member based on three absences, which were unexcused. So at this time, we're going to have to do a roll call vote to decide whether or not her position is, shall be vacated. Carly, the rules provide that you do it. Go ahead, Juliana.
There's a, there's a resolution. Carly has a draft resolution to be read. If someone, if someone would like to read it.
Sorry. She's right. Give me one, one second. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Juliana.
I'm sorry.
Take your time.
Of course, now I can't find it.
So I'll, I'll talk while you find it. Carly, okay, so, you know, it's, it's not typical that we make such motions and we're generally pretty much, in the past, we've been pretty much easygoing with absences by CEC members, but the problem is becoming that we are not getting quorum and it's difficult for us to conduct business. So we've had very limited attendance and I think we need to make sure that we have enough CEC council members, so if there is an excusable absence, that we can still act and move forward as a council. We are still waiting for the borough-appointed representatives because we should be 12 members and we're not. We're nine, or we should be 11. So we definitely are, are feeling the absence. Here it is.
I'm ready.
Okay, so that's the reason why we are very concerned about a position. Okay, does anyone want to read the resolution or shall I read it?
You want me to?
You want me to read it?
Are you, who's that?
Michelle.
Michelle, do you mind reading it?
Um, resolution to declare a seat vacant, whereas New York State, is that short for education?
Yes.
Okay, I can see. New York State Education Law Art 52 slash A 2590 provides that a member of a community, District Education Council, who refuses or neglects to attend three meetings of such council, of which he or she is duly notified, without rendering in writing a good and valid excuse, therefore vacates his or her office by refusal to serve. And whereas, the law further provides that after the third unexcused absence, the community council shall declare a vacancy to the chancellor. And whereas, you could scroll down.
Carly, can you scroll?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Can you see?
Okay. Pamela Altamourino has, without providing in, in writing a good and valid excuse, a good and valid excuse, missed three meetings as follows. July 7, 2021, August 4, 2021, and September 14, 2021. Therefore, be it resolved that CEC 25 hereby declares to the chancellor that a vacancy exists on the council, duly adopted by CEC 25 on September 23, 2021. By a vote of...
That's what we're doing now.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Michelle. So this is the resolution that would, that we need to vote on to approve the vacancy. Once it's voted on, if it's, if we receive a quorum, correct, Juliana, we need to receive a quorum to vacate that seat, then we can send it to the chancellor and announce the vacancy to the community, correct? Thank you. So at this point, I believe...
Joe, can I ask a question before you call and so?
Discussion on it, yes. Does anybody have?
No, 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 no discussion, just a question. So I know that nobody has ever been able to contact with her, but we have repeatedly tried to contact her, right? So you're saying that we have made attempts, or Carly has made attempts to contact her, but there is no response from it, right?
I've called, I've emailed, I've texted.
Okay.
Juliana has also tried to reach her as well.
I think Carly and I have each had maybe one conversation with her. But that was like just sort of to like make sure that she knew that she was on the education council and then subsequent attempts went unanswered, right Carly?
Yes.
Okay, and so there was no, okay, so you guys tried to reach her, but there's no answer, like nobody knows if she's okay, not okay, but basically, there's no response.
We had a conversation. Wait, like Carly and I have, yeah, one conversation each.
Okay, so after two conversations, there has been no response or reciprocation from the other side. But you guys have attempted more than two times to contact her, okay? So there isn't, there is a solid evidence that we tried to call her, email her, but there's no response from her. Okay.
So, and to add to that, after two absences, there is an official letter that goes out, certified mail, return receipt requested, to the residence address of the person who's been vacant two times, unexcused, and I believe that went out. Can you verify that, Carly?
Yes, I sent that out, uh, August something or other, right before I went on vacation.
Did you receive the return receipt? Did you send the return receipt requested or?
It was a certi-, it was certified. It was certified mail.
Okay, so the notice was sent to Pamela after two absences and I haven't heard anything from her and I don't believe anyone else has, correct?
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions before we take the vote?
August 20th, I sent it out to her.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay Carly, so let's go through the roll call vote.
Joseph Di Benedetto.
I agree in favor of signing off on the resolution to vacate the seat.
Wen Yu.
I vote to have the vacant seat open.
Okay. Anne Marie Knabel.
Vote in favor of the resolution.
Okay. Joseph Chow. Joseph, you're gonna mute yourself, I can't hear you.
Sorry. I, I agree. I vote to vacate her.
Okay. Sung Young Lee.
I agree to the vacate, the seat to the resolution.
Rashmi Krishn Raj.
Agreed.
Michelle Frederick.
I agree to the resolution.
Okay, so it's a unanimous vote.
So it was unanimous vote by seven of our members that are present this evening that the seat is hereby vacated. Carly, you will send the, you'll, do we, do I need to sign off on that note, on that resolution? Do we have to all sign off on it or we can just use this recorded meeting as proof? Okay, so you'll send the proof to the chancellor's office and then we can announce the vacancy to the community? And then we need to ask the community if anyone should want to serve as a council member. And at this point, it's not the community who elects the council member, but us as a CEC. So the appropriate notices will go out and we'll get nominations, we'll have the candidates appear at our meetings and then we will take the vote to fill that particular vacancy, correct? Juliana, correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you, Juliana. So that is the easy part of the meeting, so thank you for that. Now, look, I called this meeting because there's a lot of things that have been going on since the, the governor Cuomo at the time had announced that the public meeting law, the, we had to appear in person in Ju-, in July and then the newly appointed governor gave us the extension on the old, the old format till January. And we still operated in person the last month, but at this time, we need to move forward and, you know, figure out how we are going to conduct our meetings because we have not had a quorum at our last meeting and the rules have changed since we had voted back in July about meeting in person and having the public participate remotely. So I just want to acknowledge, make a comment of FACE's involvement and how we operate. And I, you know, I do appreciate that Juliana is here and now FACE is here as an advisory group to us. FACE, you know, and they do a lot to assist us in how we operate, but I want the council members to understand, FACE does not elect us. We're not holding our position because FACE put us here. We're duly elected by the public, so we're public-elected officials, right? So we have to abide by state law and the mandates of state law. We asked FACE's assistant at certain times because we need sometimes some type of guidance. And I know in the past, you were all included on an email where we had, I had called the special meeting and I believed that we had three options of how we were to operate. And I'll, and I'll go through them. So the first option was either we conduct our meetings fully remote, the way we did the last term during the pandemic when there were no in-person meetings. So that would be option A. Option B would be that we operate on a hybrid level, which means if we choose to attend in person as council members, the public, if, as long as they're limited and they, they adhere to the rules of the COVID regulations and the rules of the building, would be permitted to join us. But at the same time, we run a remote option where the public would be viewing our meeting, would have the opportunity to cooperate. And the kicker here is the CEC members, right? So if a CEC member was not, or is not available to show up in person, then that member would be able to appear virtually and that appearance would count as quorum and that CEC member would be permitted to vote. That would be option B. The way we were discussing at our last meeting, we were also discussing the possibility that we would vote on a fully attending CEC, meaning that we would require that 100% of our CEC members appear in person and we give the public the opportunity to cooperate, participate remotely. So it seems that FACE was of the opinion that we were not able to have that option, that we must allow CEC members who do not appear in person to appear remotely and that their, that their appearance remotely would count towards quorum and they would have the opportunity to vote. So I have to thank Anne Marie Knabel because after that memo went out, she contacted Albany and she was able to speak to the author of the memo from the, from Albany, Shoshana Boulay. And Shoshana confirmed that the decision, it's, it's not mandated that we must do that. The decision is up to the CEC to vote on it as a council. So I respectfully disagree with what FACE, you know, advises us, that we cannot vote on the option of having 100% appearance by CEC members at our meetings. And, but I do want to state that it's, the decision is ours. So we respect FACE, we understand that FACE facilitates to assist us, but we have to understand as a council that we operate independent of FACE. We make the decision. So if we decide as a council on one of the options, then we have to respect that, right? And I respect all of you and I just want you to understand that we, as a council, have three options. And those are the options that are presented this evening. And before we get started, I just wanted to ask if anybody has a motion on any particular option. I'll, I'll entertain any motions on how we are to operate as a CEC moving forward.
So, Joe, so your, your motion is to be all in person? Is that, or are we just discussing right now?
I'm just discussing what our options are and I'm asking if anybody on the council has, wants to make the motion, any motion, to how we are to operate as a council. Those are our options. We have to discuss them and obviously vote on them. I just want the council to understand what our options are and how we operate. And, you know, my opinion is that we are operating on the state law. So I will, you know, leave those three options on the table. And if any member of the council wants to make a motion on any of them, I will entertain it at this time.
So I, I would motion to do 100% remote and take advantage of for next few months. So I guess somebody has to second that, right?
Correct. Rashmi makes the motion to move forward with our meetings from here, from here and after as fully remote, correct?
Right till January or whenever this law, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. The law states that the option is there until the January meeting.
Okay.
Does anyone on the council second the motion?
I'll second it. The fact that we have seven members here already means that remote work.
Understood. Okay, so now that the motion is made and Mr. Chow had seconded the motion, I'll entertain discussion on it so we can talk about it, correct?
Sure.
Does anybody want to start? Rashmi, do you want to start since you made the motion?
Sure, I guess the ball is in, the burden is on my shoulders, right? Okay, I'm very happy to see you guys today and I know that the reason I say 100% remote is based on the fact that the schools are opening and a lot of new COVID cases are coming around and we as a parents are juggling between our kids who are going to school and coming back and doing the, doing our own work and doing this volunteer work. So one of the reasons, and I missed the last meeting and I know it was unexcused, is because I came in close contact with somebody who had to go test for COVID. And if I wouldn't care about my council members, I would have just come to the meeting. And now God knows what else would have happened because every one of us have children. And in that rush and bush, I didn't, I just, I just didn't have the opportunity to sit in front of my computer and email, so I missed the meeting. But if it was remote, I would have probably attended, I mean, if I had the, if we had made the motion that we can do remote and I can vote and all that stuff, it would have been easy for me to log in at some point. And also, I will, I don't want to use anybody's example, but when I was looking at the minutes, I realized one of our other council member, I believe it was Michelle, she was not able to make it also. And today, we have seven members. So I think that if the system, which hardly gives us a chance to be so flexible, is giving us a chance, we should take advantage of it. And it's not that it's going to be there for next two years of our term, it's just for the matter of few months when the flu season is coming, it's winter time. We are already Sept-, end of September, so it's October, November, December and January, just four months to get rid of this, what's going on with our education, kids going to school. We will have more participation, more people will be able to come, all our CEC members, like Mr. Chow pointed, it'll be seven, perhaps more by that time, we'll be able to get more things done. But if we not give that flexibility to the parents, I believe that we, we are just telling us, you know, I don't care if the system is giving us a chance, I'm not going to take it. I'm just going to come in person because that's what I want to do. But there are a lot of people who are not able to come in person for whatever reasons. Like if my car, I ha-, if I don't have a car, I have to take two bus to come there. I mean, wherever, wherever we decide, I mean, and even to Linden Place, there are two buses that I have to come. And I have two little kids, so do I take chance on their safe? And I know we all have little kids, so I'm not saying, but I'm speaking from my perspective and I'm speaking for all those parents' perspective who do not have the luxury of coming to in-person meeting just because they're able to. So why not show our, show our community, hey, listen, we hear you, we are here to support you, it's not about me, it's about all of us. Let's just take advantage of the system. When was the last time government and system gives parents this much chance? Take the chance. It's only for four months and we are all new. We will get a lot more things in place and then voila, January and the spring is going to start and we'll back in person. By that time, schools will be more in sync with what's happening with this Delta variant, no immunization is coming. There's a, there's a lot going on, there's a lot on the plate for, and I know the argument is kids are going in person, so why can't I? That's why we have to be safe, so if my kids fall sick, I can take care of them. I don't want to be in a situation that I get sick, then who will take care of my kids? So I want as an adult, and my immune system must be, is probably at a different level than my two young kids got, I mean, I hope so. So if they're going to school, like all their friends and they come and they get some kind of medical issue and I have to take them and run to the doctor's office, but I still want to do this community service, I want to make sure I'm safe. So I understand that argument and I respect it. Kudos to all the children and I know Catherine is here, all the students going to school, awesome, great, but I'm sure Catherine wants her mom and dad and her, and her family to be safe for her to be taken care of if something happens to her. So all of us rushing to in-person just because, just because we have to do it, I think it's impractical and it's, it's not respecting the bigger cause. The bigger cause is we got elected by parents, we are here to talk about children. We are here, by this time, we should have done a lot more workshop, mindstorming, doing stuff, but we are still here at this point, doing a special meeting, voting, whether we are going to be all in person, all in remote, that's just being unfair to the other members who for whatever reason are not going to come or cannot come in person. So don't think about the parents, think about the children too. We have to make sure parents are safe and it just gives us some time to put our hands in, in the sand. So I, based, if it was for two years, I would have been reluctant because I know how remote was for two years. I would have been reluctant, but the best part is it's finite, it's only four months. Let's take advantage of it, let's be smart and take advantage of it. And forget about this, let's start working for our children right now, for God's sake. We are here, we got elected for them, not to fight with each other about in-person, remote, remote, in-person. It's, it's, it's just, I am, I have too much going on in my life and I'm sure a lot of parents are there too. I'm thinking all about kids and I want to make myself safe so I can take care of my children. So that's why I choose remote, because I know I am saving a lot more people and it's only for four months, so I want to go with remote and that's why I motion for remote.
Thank you, Rashmi. I just want to make, I appreciate your comments, but I just want to make something clear because I'm looking at the chat and the, the public that's here, I don't know if they fully understand. We're not here, it, it's not our decision whether or not students go to school. So it's not, we're not here to vote on whether or not the children have the remote learning option. We're talking about us as a CEC and how we conduct our CEC meetings. So I just wanted, you know, because I'm looking at the chat here and it seems like it's, they're talking about students. So I, I understand your comments, Rashmi, and I thank you for that. Does anyone else want to comment at this time?
Um, oh, all right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm...
No, 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 go.
So, Michelle, do you mind? Catherine, I'll let you speak. Go ahead.
Uh, well, I think, um, I like the fully in-person, I know I've only been to one meeting, but they seem to be pretty successful. I felt safe, we were all apart and wearing masks. And I think we should take advantage of the in-person meetings as long as we can because as we said before, things are always changing, so we might not even have that option anymore, maybe next month or in a few months. And I don't know, Zoom is really hard for me. I, I was on Zoom all of last year and some of this year and I know like getting there is hard and everyone has a lot of things to do. As a student in the New York City Public Schools, I get that, like, I, I'm in clubs and extracurricular activities and I'm applying to colleges right now. So I get it's a lot, but I think just being in person is the better option for right now and totally just take advantage of that as we still have it.
Thank you, Catherine. So I, we always appreciate the students' perspective and we really appreciate your comments. That was very brave and I thank you for your comments. I'm gonna go, thank you again. I'm gonna go now to Michelle Frederick. Go ahead.
Um, well, first thing I want to say is that I, I don't, not that I have a preference, but my preference would to be not to go hybrid. And I say that because I, I don't think it would be fair for the people who never come in person than the other people who do come in person, and we all have the same rights. I don't think that's fair. Second, I just want to comment on what Rashmi said because she said she saw the, um, the agenda and I wasn't there. So I just want to speak for myself. myself, and say that my absence was excused, I had to work, and I could not get out of work. It was no getting out of work, and with the amount of work that I do. Um, I, I know you said that you had come in close contact with somebody, I don't know if notification was ever made to say that, because I think that would have been an excuse absence, we voted, it was, they voted, it was unexcused.
Right, because I did not do it, yeah. I did not do it. It was, it was personal, it was, it was something I did not know that I needed to do, and I didn't have the time to do it. So yes, I know the reason why it was unexcused, because I didn't get an opportunity to do that. I, I totally agree with that, yeah.
Okay, um, and also, as far as remote, I'm not, I'm not going to, it's very convenient, that's the one thing about it, you can get a lot of people on, it's convenient from your own home. Um, I can say that for me, if I can get there in person with what I do, and I'm, and I, I, I mean, I go there from home, from work, and I'm working all these hours, and I come there, I mean, I think once a month is satisfactory to come and meet for two hours, once a month. I mean, all my other meetings, obviously, you know, they're, they're Zoom because of the guidelines, but I'm, the only thing about Zoom is that it, I don't have a prep, if we do all remote, that's fine, if you do in person, that's fine. I just want to, I don't know if it's a motion, but I just don't want to do hybrid. I don't think that's fair, and I don't think we should all be able to do the same thing with somebody sitting behind the screen, and somebody actually sitting there in person in front of the other person, actually having conversation. Um, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Michelle, appreciate your comments as well. Uh, next, uh, yes, I'm, I'm just going as you raise your hand, Anne Marie, you're next.
Okay, so I know, you all know my opinion, so I'm not gonna beat a dead horse with what you heard already at the last meeting. But I am for one hundred percent remote, because I do feel like Catherine, I think we have enough Zoom, and while we do have the opportunity to be in person, because, because, for the opposite reason of what Rashmi said, because of the Delta variant, we don't know if we're all gonna be locked back in our houses again, you know, and that was a really hard time for many people, you know. And I do feel strongly that our administration for the schools, our children are in the schools, look at PS thirty, sent us an invitation to come to their school. I think it's important for the school community to see that we're active and we're with them by being there with them. And it is in a safe manner, and I do trust that things will be done in accordance with, with CDC guidelines. Along with that, you know, it's only four months, right? But then in January, if it extends again, and then people are going to want another extension, like, how long do we roll with that? You know, we have, um, to me, it just makes sense to be in person and get that valuable, I feel like this is not a fight, it was only not agreed upon last meeting, because we didn't have quorum, and, you know, that's unfortunate, we really need those two borough president seats to be filled. You know, the restrictions with the school as far as the vaccine mandate, that's not a CEC restriction, that's not us singling anybody out, saying you can't come, that's a school DOE role, you know. But as far as, as us, I think that it just makes sense that we continue in person, you know, the, the situations that were described, my children, I, everyone, I have three children, okay, two of my children are special needs, okay, my, my son has Down syndrome, is it convenient for me to be home? Absolutely, you see him pop into the, the screen. I very rarely get, you know, um, time at home where he's not needing something, you know, but I make the time for things that I'm committed to. When I took this position, and I applied for it, I knew that it was gonna be in person. You know, all of those things, elderly parents, health conditions, special needs children, children, commute, all of that was in place before COVID, all of that was in place when we made the obligation, the commitment to join the CEC. So those to me are not excuses. It is, like Michelle said, definitely convenient to be on Zoom, a hundred percent. But that's not the commitment I made, I didn't make the commitment to be on Zoom, I made the commitment to meet in person with parents, you know, and educators that I respect, and to get things done. Honestly, June, June and July and August are slow months as far as CEC, because the parents are not, you know, participating as much, because school is out. So, right now, September is where we really start to launch into, to things, and I think we already got off to a great start with discussing resolutions, like Joseph Chabot to the table. So I think that we already are progressing, but I think that we need to just take into account the whole picture, and not just what's convenient, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Does anyone else have any comment?
I raised my hand, you didn't call.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, Mr. Chow, I see your hand now, yes.
Follow directions. Anyway, I think Anne Marie made a mistake at the beginning, she says she's for a hundred percent remote, she meant in person, right?
I did, thank you for that correction, yeah, that's correct.
You meant in person, okay, you're scared, all right, so anyway, uh, everybody sounded lofty and noble. I just want to point out one thing, well, maybe a few things. Number one, this is the first remote meeting we have, and we have, we met Corin, right? Um, I was hoping Michelle would say, if we had remote, she would have been able to join, but anyway, like I said, the reason why I believe in, um, fully remote is because it gives us flexibility, um, it's not a matter of convenience. Like I said, so I wrote an email, I don't know if you got it, for those of, those of us who love each other so much, we can meet at someone's house. For those who can't meet, then we do remote. We're, we have to get things done. Without six votes, seven votes is not enough, we're supposed to have twelve members, we need to have all twelve. I did it, I did some math, if everybody's allowed three absences, unless we have, uh, you know, twelve members, two or three people can be absent every time, and we may not be able to vote. And, uh, my next option.
I want to just correct one thing, we're not twelve members right now, we're actually.
I understand, I, I understand what I'm saying. Suppose we did have twelve members, right? We don't, then if two people are absent, then we can't vote. Right? I'm not thinking for me, I mean, I signed up for the job, I don't care what I have to do. I also want to point out, there's positive cases in my son's school, there are positive cases in my daughter's school, luckily not in their class. The chancellor has changed the rule. Originally, he provided, uh, you know, remote, uh, act, remote learning. I think basically that was done with, because he said if there, for those who are not vaccinated, my son got a letter from Thompson Harris stating that in your classroom, if there's a positive case, you're vaccinated, you have to quarantine for five days. If you didn't, you have to quarantine for ten days, that's out of the window already. The chancellor is now saying, if you're not vaccinated, there's a positive case in your class, as long as you wear your mask, you don't have to quarantine. I'm very certain, the reason why they can't do remote is not because the chancellor or the mayor doesn't want to, the UFT won't agree to it, and there's nothing they can do. All right, so I vote, I want it fully remote, my next option will be something else, but, uh, Michelle said it's not fair, uh, hybrid. I thought, I never thought it that way, because my goal is very simple, get enough people to vote. I'm not thinking in terms of fairness or unfairness, I mean, I guess it's unfair, because I can walk to Linden from my house in ten, fifteen minutes, I guess I have advantage, but I'm not looking at it that way. And I didn't sign up, because I knew the meeting were, were gonna be held in Linden. I think my goal is very simple, we have to get enough votes, whatever mode it is, hybrid, or whatever, it's, let's go with that, it's only till January anyway. And we received a letter in Chinese, I don't know if you saw it, I responded to the parent, she's extremely concerned, she wanted remote learning. She, scientifically, we don't know what negative impact this will have on children long-term, so she's very, very concerned, and she's not the only parent. I wrote an email, seven hundred eighteen parents voted for me to join the council. I'm also a WeChat member of eleven groups, each group has up, up to upward five hundred members. So most of these parents don't, they don't, they want remote. And I, I've been telling them, it's not a decision you can make, it's a public school, the mayor and the chancellor gets to make the decision. They're very, very concerned about their children's, um, uh, you know, well-being. I, I also want to find out, God forbid, there, you know, if there's a case in my daughter or my son's class that's positive, few days prior to the, uh, CEC meeting, do you want me to come, me have in person? Don't tell me you're gonna allow me to come and sit next to you. I don't think you'll let me do that. All right, I wouldn't want to do that to you either, but I don't, I want to be there.
You wouldn't be permitted to come, anyway.
And that would be an excuse absence.
Yeah, that's an excuse absence.
Right, but I don't want to be excused, I, I'm not worried about losing my job, I'm worried about getting six, seven, eight, nine people to be there.
I don't want to interrupt you, um, Joseph, but I just want to say, everybody keeps saying, oh, it's only for, for a month, it's only for four months, COVID is not going away. I just want to say, COVID is here, it's probably most likely here to stay, we don't know if it's only for four months. In January, they can extend it, who knows, we don't know, we don't, we're not in mind either. We're here to talk about whether we should be in-person, hybrid, or, or remote. I think it's way too many, it's too, everything else is extra. You know, we, 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 we're just talking about three things, three options, what do we want to do? Everything else is just, is, 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 is extra things being thrown out there, that could be talked about at probably our next meeting.
Absolutely, I want to stick to the, I want to stick to the issues with why, why we're here for, I'm not, we're not discussing students and opening schools remotely, and we're discussing how we are going to operate as CEC. Okay, so, um, if you have anything further on that, Mr. Chow, I'll move on to the next member who'd like to comment. I, I don't want to cut you off, I'm not sure if you're done.
I, I, I'm done, I agree, but everything else related, everything else related.
Thank you. Catherine, I know you're raising, I just want to get through the other CEC members, I'll come back to, is that okay? This is quick. You okay with that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, okay. Does anyone else on the council have anything to say? Wendy, go ahead.
I agree with Joseph, I like, I like Joseph, I just want to get things done, that's what we're here for. Um, I'm actually for the hybrid option, um, and, you know, for those of you, you know, who can't physically make it in person, but want to, you know, want to participate, you know, I don't see why not. Um, I think it might, i- it's, it's convenient, and it's, you know, flexibility for all of us, right? I mean, maybe I can go this month, or I might not be able to come the next month, but I still want to participate and know what's going on and vote, right? So, I mean, I would like to have that option, I mean, I, um, but this is only for meetings, because we, right? Because we still have the, we still have to visit the school, make the, you know, in-person visits at the school.
So, that, that's been restricted because of the rules. So apparently now, you, if, unless you are vaccinated, you will not be permitted in the school. Uh, my understanding is, we cannot do visits during school hours, if there are students in school, we cannot attend. Uh, we were invited to a PS thirty-two breakfast, each and every one of us, uh, but they had to change the time, because it had to be during a time when children were not present in the building. So those are the guidelines for the DOE, the city, I, that we can't change. So the, the school visits at this time, I think, you know, it's, it's, that's not even, you know, uh, we'll work that out regardless. Again, we're here just for the purpose of deciding how we are to move forward as, uh, conducting our CEC meetings. So I understand you seem to prefer the hybrid option, is that correct, Wendy? And I don't want to cut you off if you have something else to say. Okay. Uh, Sunia, do you have any comments, or?
I have a question, because I received an email, we all received the email, if it goes hybrid, what, uh, members can present in person and through the Zoom, we have to be in a public setting when any public could, it's accessible where we are, and it has to be wheelchair accessible as well. So that part, I got really confused. So when I'm doing Zoom over here in my house, that means I have to let public know my address, and they have to.
So I don't, I'm gonna ask face or the district office, if the district office is here to, uh, elaborate, well, actually, to elaborate on that, because that is a question, i- if we're gonna do a hundred percent remote, then that does, that's not the case. It'll be, our locations will not be disclosed, because we'll all be appearing remotely. If we're going to, the question is, Juliana, if we're gonna do a hybrid, and before I get there, just want to clarify one thing. Any DOE building, including our, the building where we run our meetings, if you're not vaccinated, they will not let you into the building. Just understand that, right? That's, that's not something that we have control over, but they just won't let us into the building. So understand that. But, um, Juliana, are, are there different guidelines with regard to the hybrid? In other words, if we do a hybrid meeting, and we choose to appear remotely, do we have to disclose our location?
You do not have to disclose your location because of, um, the new legislation. So, chapter four seventeen of the laws of twenty twenty-one, that's in effect, um, pertaining to public meetings until January fifteenth, um, suspends, um, that, that requirement, that you would have to disclose your location.
Yeah, that was my understanding. So like, as, as it's extended, we don't have to disclose our location if we do a remote or a hybrid option. Do you have anything that, that you want to comment on, Sunian, or?
Um, so, if we do go on a hybrid, our members who's in a Zoom will be able to count, consider, could vote for our quorum.
So if, if we decide on the hybrid option, then those members that would appear remotely, for whatever reason, they would count towards quorum, and they would have a vote, yes, but they would have to appear, uh, virtually.
Okay, the, the reason why I want to clarify this fact is because I, we did receive a lot of emails, and it was going back and forth, and I got lost in track, and that even last, last meeting, we were talking about, I got lost, like, my God, what's going on? Because if, if, uh, if a hybrid option is a public accessible, like, uh, it was before what they stated, face stated before, then definitely I will do in-person. However, if the hybrid, we don't need to disclose our location, I do prefer hybrid meeting, only because, um, for members who cannot be physically be in person, I, like a last meeting, uh, we couldn't do, we couldn't have a quorum, so we couldn't decide on anything. I just wanna, like, I just want that to be, I guess, flexible, I'll say, until January. I'm not talking about, um, I'm totally on in-person meeting as well, even though it goes to a hybrid, I'll definitely be there. It just said when I cannot physically be there, because I feel sick, maybe I'm coughing or having a fever, even though I don't have a COVID, I will be a little hesitant to be there for other members and other public who's, who attends in that meeting, and that way, but I still wants to be participant, then I'll be able to participate through Zoom. So I think the hybrid action would be good for us, if our address does not get disclosed to public. That's my, that's my decision.
I just, thank you, Sunian. Um, I want to give everybody the opportunity to speak before I go back to, if, if you already commented, just had a, you know, I want to make everybody have the opportunity to speak. I know Catherine wants to say something else, I know you do, you know, I want to say something as well, and I think I'm the last one here anyway, right? So I, you know, I respect everybody's, uh, comments, and I understand the issues. Um, look, personally, I like the dynamics of an in-person meeting, um, it, everything flows a little differently. Uh, I think the message to the students are, you know, look, you go in person, we're, we're, we're coming in person, we, I, I think it's just dynamics, it works differently in person, um, and I like the interaction. But at the same time, I would not want to exclude anybody who could not or has a different opinion, right? So we're all, we have to respect everybody, and we have, we're here for not just ourselves, but for the community. So if a CEC member could not be there, I mean, I personally would prefer the hybrid, and I would not want to exclude that CEC member from, uh, taking part in any decision. So I would, you know, say, well, that's fine, if you can't make it, then I respect that, and, uh, you can participate virtually, and you'll have your vote, and we can get things moving, because we'll have a quorum. So I kind of agree with what Wendy and Sunian has to say, because I think that, my personal opinion, that would be the best option. But it, again, it's not my decision, we're going to take a vote on it, and I respect all of you, and I respect however it's, you know, however the vote goes. Um, but that's my opinion. Now, Rashmi, before I get to you, I just wanted to respect Catherine, because Catherine is our student, it's always nice to hear her perspective, and I just want to give her the floor for a moment before I come to you, Rashmi, okay?
That's fine, yeah, definitely.
Thank you. So I hear what everyone's saying, and
So I hear what everyone's saying and the biggest thing from what I gathered is that it's it's risky. Um, but if we're being honest, right now, everything is risky. And like, it's risky to go to the supermarket to buy food, like, everything has some sort of risk to it. But if we we think that way, obviously, we're gonna end up remote, but life has to move on. And and we were fully remote, um, I don't know about the C E C, but school was fully remote last year. Everything, all my clubs and activities and college classes were here online on Zoom last year. Um, so I I just think like, do remote, um, do, um, in person as when we have the option. Um, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. So just Catherine, I I really get appreciate your comments. I just want you to understand and there's no offense to you. The vote goes only to the C E C members, but we appreciate your comments.
My input, thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Rashmi, go ahead.
So, yes, hi, Catherine, awesome. You'll be the future leader. I'll I'll look at you very outspoken, you speak very eloquently and it's it's amazing to see that our youngsters are out there talking and understanding. So hats off to you, amazing. Um, very good. So, um, I totally see your point and I I totally understand that. But as an adult, when we talk about fear and risk-taking, it's, it comes from a different perspective than our kids when they, when they talk about risk and fear. When we talk about, um, when an eighteen-year-old talks about taking risks, they have a different threshold, uh, kinetics, um, different threshold of taking risk and and combating that risk. But when a mom and dad, and these are volunteer services, when we talk about taking risk is not about just in terms of getting sick or making someone sick. It's all about juggling so many stuff, like all of us are working parents. We work in some capacity to leave work at a certain point, like what Michelle was saying, you know, something came up at her work. It can happen anytime to anybody and she works very hard and she's a mom, she's a working mom. Something came up and she was not physically able to make to the meeting. And it, and like what Joseph was, Joseph Chow was, um, stating, it's if he was caught talking about twelve versus, I know we don't have twelve, but he was saying, let's say we only end up having nine people because it's taking time to get to the other members on board. If for whatever reason, we are not able to physically make to the meeting, we will not have a quorum. And in the same way, I agree with something and Wendy, it's all about, let's get things done. If getting things done means that we have to be hybrid or remote, let's do that. Because there's always a chance we as a parent, we are not able to make to these meetings. And it has happened in the past and it can continue to happen more now than before. So when we talk about risks, it's, and I totally understand. It's, and I love your perspective of seeing it differently, like, hey, we have the window to come in person, come in person now because you never know, the window may close, but then we can revisit this window or we can talk about it. It's, it's about using the best approach to all these different things that an adult juggles on a day-to-day life. So having said that, I mean, I know I said hundred percent remote because that gives everybody the same equal equality, but I also see the point of hybrid. But either one of the two makes people, um, make people more engaged because there are more people like, look, we are having an awesome discussion. We are very different. We all have different ways of looking at it, but we are all as an adult having a discussion. And so that's what I, that's what I'm sure Joe wants to see. He wants to see us move forward with disagreements, you know, and we cannot do that if we don't have a quorum. So do what we need to do to have a quorum. I mean, that should be our agenda for today.
Thank you, Rashme. Good points. I see Anne Marie. Go ahead, Anne Marie. Wendy, did you raise your hand as well? I'll get to you after, Anne Marie, is that okay?
Sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand on Zoom.
I just.
I have to use my real hand. So I I just want to say real quick that, um, I just lost track of what I was gonna say. So Wendy, can you go? Because I just lost my train of thought.
Sure. You know, whether, you know, we vote for hybrid or, you know, in person. I mean, if we still have the in-person option, I think most likely I will be in person. Because I, like Joe said, I like the in-person dynamics with the, with the members. Um, I think with this public meeting law, right, it's expiring in January, right? And so I'm sure we will come back and revisit this issue again and have another special meeting to discuss this. Am I correct?
Probably. I don't think it's going away.
Right. Anne Marie?
I remembered. I just wanted to say that, um, this is not a fight. This is not an argument. This is a meeting that's happening because we couldn't decide it at last meeting. And I've heard that referenced a few times. And I just want to make clear that we have such a great group and we really do all work well together. And I'm so happy for that. But I just want to really make clear that this is not what should be considered a fight or an argument. This is just us coming together to make this decision because we couldn't do so last time. And then my last point is, it's tough right now, number-wise, because we are short four seats basically, because our borough president seats have not been filled. Honestly, this wouldn't even, we wouldn't even have a quorum issue if all of our seats were filled. I'm sure of that. We have two borough president vacancies. We have Pamela's seat, which she never came to at all. And Binham, I don't know if I'm saying it right, has also not been able to attend either virtually or in person. So that's really what's crippled us, okay? Those numbers being down, well, we're at full capacity. This is moot. So I just think we should keep that in mind in our decision-making process. Is that a lot of these struggles right now, as far as numbers and not being to progress, is a struggle right now, just like a temporary thing to, to, you know, four months to get to January. Where, like Wendy said, we're gonna be revisiting this again, okay? That's hopefully by January, we're gonna have all our members. You know, so this, this will be moot. I just wanted to to put that out there as a reminder, okay?
And that's, we're right now, we're four members down.
Right.
We, Pam's position, Byung hasn't shown up and we have the two borough appointees. Um, so that's, uh, you know, that's crippling us right now. So right, even tonight, we're at seven. I don't even know if we're gonna get a quorum on the, on on anything we vote on. So, um, thank you for that, Anne Marie. Does anyone else have any comments?
I just want to say, and I don't think it has anything to do with a virtual thing or a remote thing. Because there's two seats that were never filled. There's one seat that this person never came. And there's another seat by Young M. He, I don't know what the issue was with him, but I mean, I guess the, the issue was that he wanted, he wanted to come virtually, but he's not here either. So is remote the real issue? I mean, Rashme came the first time and she never came after that and she says she didn't want to be in person. So what is really the issue? Is it really being remote? I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think so because the rest of the members are there. So I just want to say, and it's difficult for everybody. Kids, adults, it's difficult for everybody. It's nothing, it's nothing different. It's not, um, it's not different from adults and kids. I mean, adults are variant. It's attacking the kids, right? So I mean, if anything, at this point, we should be like, I mean, the kids have it hard. We all have it hard. COVID is not going anywhere. I just want to say once again, I don't like the, I don't like the hybrid. And I'm gonna say this because if I have to find babysitters and take my car and go on my car and go in the rain or the snow or whatever the case may be to get to the, to to get to this in-person meeting, even if it's after work, I don't think it's right that the person can get up out their bed, turn on their computer and look at me while I just traveled somewhere in person and they have, they can do the same thing I'm doing. I might as well just get out my bed also and go on the computer. I I I just don't think that's an option. But that's it.
Understood. Thank you, Michelle. It's, it's a tough call. It's, it's, um, not easy. It's, whatever we decide, you know, I I'm assuming that, um, there's always room for change. We can always, uh, take it up. But I don't want to, so I I know what the motion is. I, uh, are we ready to vote on the motion or does anyone else have any comments that they'd like to make? So the motion that's on the table right now is motion for fully remote meetings. We're gonna have to vote on that because that was what the motion was for. Does anyone have any comments before, um, we, uh, take that motion on for vote? Now, we don't have to have a resolution at this time, correct, Juliana? It's just on, we're just discussing, right?
Yeah, you can, um, most votes like this one don't require a resolution, so it's just your vote will stand.
So before we go for the one hundred percent fully remote option as a choice, uh, does anyone else have any last comments to make?
I have a quick question. It's not a comment, it's more like a question. We're missing two borough appointee. Do we have approximate, like, um, time when that seat will be able to be filled?
So I, you know, I personally left two messages with Monica Gutierrez. Monica Gutierrez and is the representative, the education representative for the borough president, correct, Juliana? I've left messages with her. I haven't gotten any phone calls back from her. I know that there are community members that submitted applications for the appointment and they have not, they're being vetted, they they have not been called. At the same time, I know that the borough president's office contacted other parents who have not even put in an application and asked them if they want to run for office. I don't know what's going on. Juliana, I've asked you many times if you could help us on that issue. You know, I I I don't understand how District Twenty-six had the two borough appointees in July and we're now almost at October and we still don't have any news. And I know that their application's in. So, I mean, are you able to elaborate? This can go on. Last, the last term, Anne Marie was an appointee. I don't, she started, when did you start? It was well in advance of the school year, right?
I started in September and September, but the seat had been vacated, I think, the whole.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, this is a concern and that's why, you know, we really need to move now. And, you know, we need, we can't sit there and wait for them to appoint somebody. And, you know, we did the right decision with Pam because now we'll try to fill in that vacancy and maybe we'll have eight members, right? Um, I don't know what's happening with Byung, but, you know, we have one more meeting and potentially he might be facing, uh, a vacate of a seat. So, you know, we're doing what we have to do to move forward, but we're, we're very limited right now. So right now, we're talking about our next meeting, which will be October, uh, and whether or not we want to decide to go fully remote for that meeting.
Because the only reason why I wanted to go on hybrid is because, as we all know, um, since July, August, and of September meeting, there's only six of us.
Well, that's what happened. Michelle had an excusable absence and we could not vote. And, you know, we would have taken on the issue less, without calling a special meeting. If if if, you know, we had the quorum present, but that, those are the rules and we can't change them. And we have to respect those that can, that have excusable absences. It's not, there's nothing wrong with that.
That's why we, we all know that it's been mostly six of us. That's why I would say it's only for the quorum that, that's why I want to vote for hybrid. If it wasn't that, I fully agreed on in-person because I do agree on your, um, statement, saying dynamics of in-person is very strong. The skin shifts, everything, we get to hear from directly from the parents, it's very effective. And that way, we, we get things our done better, I believe. But the only reason why I want to get on form is because of the situation we're in. There's only six of us in present. If one of us are not there, then there can't be any forms done and pushed back to one month later. Now, the only reason why I want to go for hybrid. And if it'll be, it'll be great if there's those two C borough appointees get filled. It will be very big plus that I'll definitely go for, uh, in-person. But I just want to go only hybrid for mainly hundred percent because I want to build that quorum, just in case.
So listen, we can always entertain a motion in the future when we have more appointed representatives or more members. I'm just concerned about our next meeting, which is October, right? Because at the time, we're just seven members. I'll allow that. Anne Marie, you have another comment?
So I do. So we're seven members tonight, right? If Michelle was working, we'd be six. If we were taking a vote and our vote wasn't unanimous, we wouldn't be getting anywhere either. So.
I don't know where we're going even tonight, right?
Right. Keeping in mind that even having the six people being hybrid doesn't mean that we're going to progress because we're so tight in numbers. So that's something we really have to, like I said, keep in mind that those vacancies, those four vacant seats is really the bigger issue. So, you know, there are gonna be excusable absences like Michelle having to work or one of us, you know, being, you know, whatever. Joe had a funeral tonight. That would be, you know, you can't help these types of things that come up unexpectedly. But it does not mean that we're gonna have a quorum or be able to vote if we have a quorum because we're so tight in numbers. And that's.
So I. Been remotely, or that could happen in person. It could happen other way, right? Or even hybrid, it could happen. Okay.
Right. So, Joe, yes, you, you guys are both right. It can happen in either one of the options. But in terms of likely, most likely, it will happen in person because that actually takes the act of going there. And hybrid is a good blend, but I also see, uh, Michelle's point that, um, if, uh, Sunian, if you will always go to the meeting and I'm gonna use me as a guinea pig. If I'm going to be remote all the time, then there's a good chance, uh, that I, my, my sentiments and my emotions, because it's a, it's a good chance that, oh, you know what, you have rolled it out of the bed and I have to make an effort to come here. So I I also see that. So most likely, it will be less chance for us not to have the quorum met just on technicality, not in terms of we had disagreement and not meeting a quorum, even if we are physically body six at least or seven members per present. Most likely, it will happen when it's remote because we know that we have an access to get on a computer or mobile phone and it's the matter of just a couple of months. And again, like you were saying, in two months, if, um, if we have more bodies on the seat, then it's, we have more flexibility to revisit if we want to. So let's, and I completely agree, October, I mean, God, if we, we are so tight in quorum, like, and everybody's saying, let's just use the option that is least likely for us not to actually have a body present if we are making a decision. That's what it is. Like, let's be, let's think in that way. This is not a permanent decision, just to, just to make things moving, like a practical things to move.
Thank you, Rashme. Um, are we ready to take on the vote? And again, I'm gonna go by motion. Are all comments done? Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna ask Carly to do the roll call vote on the motion to opt for the fully remote meetings.
Okay, ready?
Yes.
Joseph Di Benedetto?
So I, in good conscience, cannot vote for a fully remote meeting. Um, you know, kids are back at school. I, I, you know, I'm for the hybrid. I just cannot vote in good conscience on a remote. I'm sorry. No.
Okay. When you?
Um, same as Joe, um, I will not vote on one hundred percent remote meeting.
Anne Marie, can you?
No, on remote.
Okay. Hold on, I'm sorry. Joseph Chow? Joseph, where do you go?
Unmute yourself, Joseph.
Mr. Chow, you have to.
Yes, I I muted it. Yes, fully remote. I vote yes.
Okay. Okay. Erin, um, I'm sorry. Sunyang Lee?
Uh, I do not vote for a hundred percent remote.
Rashme Krishnraj?
This is a dead end, right, even if I say yes, I have a fully remote. So let's just take this motion off that because it's just, the moment you guys went three, the moment you guys three, I I I did my math and I'm sure. So, okay, so I mean, I called for motion, so it'll be very unsinkly if I say no, so I I do say hundred percent remote, but. The motion is off the table because it got voted out.
But you should still vote, I mean, it's just.
Oh, okay, yeah, I I did, yes, yes, to, yes, to fully remote, but Juliana, doesn't, isn't there a rule that when you have seven members present? If majority has already stated one side, you don't have to go through the whole seven members vote. They had, there, I I read it somewhere, or I deciphered that fine rule in that way, that if there's seven members present. Which is more than half, right? So in seven members, when you are voting, it doesn't have to be six. If we, if there are three members or four members already voted one way, then you don't have to go through the whole because you already are not meeting the quorum for that.
I mean, that makes sense, that makes sense, but I think it's better just to, just to put everyone's vote on the table.
Michelle, I don't vote, I don't vote for a lot.
Okay.
The motion is denied and the one hundred fully remote option is now off the table. Um, I don't know if we're gonna entertain a motion to conduct a meeting. One hundred percent in person or a hybrid, are there any other, are there any motions out there?
Guys, let's do, let's, let's, okay, I'll put a motion for hi- hybrid, but just gotta move on, we gotta make a decision, so can, who can second me?
I'll second the motion.
Awesome.
I think hybrid has to come with some kind of stipulation, I don't think hybrid can just be.
I have. Are you talking about? What stipulations?
Well, I didn't get to that because you asked the question before. No, I did, I'm sorry, Emily, that was me too.
Okay, I didn't hear what you said, Carly.
I said I have several questions on how hybrid would work.
All right, well, let's, as a council, first decide if we're gonna even go there and then we'll talk to Carly. Let's just make sure that that's even an option, that we have to vote on it, right, so. Let's go through the comments of the C E C, uh, and then we will, uh. Carly, I'll allow you ask questions and then we'll take the vote, but I'd rather go through the comments on the. Okay, so Rashmi, you made the motion, but you made the motion because you prefer a remote option, I'm assuming, correct?
You're so smart, that's why you're a lawyer, a real estate lawyer.
But do you have anything to say in favor of the hybrid option?
Well, it gives, uh, it gives chance to all the people, it gives a chance to, if you're not able to make it in person. To log in and to do the meeting for our business to get done, we want our business to get done. So, yes, um, I I think all of us want our business to get done, that's the core. Um, so, yes, that's, that's my biggest um, note on that.
Thank you, Rashmi, uh, Anne Marie, you had a comment?
I do, I think that hybrid needs to come with some kind of stipulation because this can go on endlessly because. We can be revisiting the same conversation in January. I think that hybrid, if I think that the intention be we be fully in person, the hybrid offering to council members that put in beforehand, like we would have an excused absence. I think they put in beforehand, I can't make this meeting because I have to work, I'll check in remotely, you know. On my lunch hour, um, or I can't make it because my car broke down, but I can go in, I think it has to have some kind of thing where we're going to know beforehand that that person's going to be hybrid. I don't think it should just be out there for an option and keep being revisited over and over again.
I believe the same rules apply, and Juliana, correct me if I'm wrong, if a member is not able to attend. Either remote, in other words, on the hybrid situation, if I am not feeling well.
I mean beforehand, Joe, I mean, if we have a meeting set for say October fourth, right, and we're gonna be in person. But the hybrid option is there, so if Rashmi knows she has the, you know, uh, something that's not gonna get her to the meeting in time. She can say, you know what, October fourth, I need to be hybrid because I have X, Y, Z. Or Michelle, you know what, I got called into work, I can check in on my lunch hour, so that, so I don't think it should just be an out there standard, I think it should.
Oh, I understand, so you're saying if someone is going to appear virtually, they would have to give advance notice, that would be the contingency in the hybrid.
Same thing with six hour notice, I think that's fair enough, the people that come in person, I think having that stipulation is only fair. And I don't think, you know, I don't wanna come out in the rain is the, is, you know, it needs to be same kind of of valid excuses like we have with an excused absence. If that makes sense.
Yes, um, that's something that we could perhaps consider. I'm gonna rush, I'll come back to you, I wanna go to Mister Chow and then I'll go to Catherine and the other members, I'm not, I didn't forget you.
Go ahead, Mister Chow. I just wanna make sure I'm muted, so the intent of the hybrid is not that you put on restrictions, that is how you feel. Now, Judge, there are seven of, seven of us, right? You should know in person is not gonna get passed. Right, so let's think in terms of what we can do or what we have to do to get things done. We need to get things done, right, we're elected to get things done, not to argue over. Things about what's fair, what's unfair, I mean, what's fair to me, maybe unfair to someone else, what's fair to someone else, maybe unfair to me. So let's just keep reminding ourselves, we need to get things done, that's it.
Thank you, Mister Chow, Catherine?
Uh, yeah, so, um, as a student, I've I've done it all, I did it all last year, I did hybrid too, um. Personally, it's it's very chaotic, it's more chaotic than being fully remote. Um, because you have to worry about the people in person and then you have to set up a computer and have to worry about the people online and it's just. You you all are saying we need something to work, I I really see, I don't see that working at all, um. Before COVID, like, we all had to figure it out, right, this is all a commitment we all signed up for and. You you, I don't know, I think we have to figure it out, like, make it, find a way to make it work is basically what I'm saying.
Understood, Catherine, um, I'll get back to you, Wendy, I just wanna make one comment. Even whatever we decide, we always are going to have to give the public the option of. Coming to our meetings remotely, because we're not able to accommodate the public to. Attend the meetings because we don't have the room, not, everyone may be vaccinated, um, so even if we decide. That we were gonna do the in person, we would still have to give access to the public to be present remotely. So it's something that is still gonna happen. We're just talking about C E C members right now, so that's why, um, it's a difficult situation, I understand, Catherine, but thank you for your point, uh, Wendy.
I agree with Catherine, um, only because sometimes, you know, when we're. You know, in the beginning of tonight's meeting, Joe, you say you have some connection, connection issue, right? You know, so if someone was, you know, one of us are. Are, you know, on remote, right, and we have a connection issue, right, with our computer or cellphone or whatnot or our devices. Then, you know, they might miss part of the, you know, meeting, you know, they might. If something could be missed, and also, you know, sometime the technology, there's a lag, then that. That will be a delay, right? And so it, I see her, I see Catherine's point on, you know, the technical issues with the hybrid option.
I respect that, I I understand, uh, before I go to Rashmi, does Sung Yen have any comment?
No, not at the moment.
Okay, go ahead, Rashmi.
So. Gosh, I lost my chain of thought, okay, um.
I can come back to you, if you want.
Before I lose, I have two thoughts, I'll just say one because I will lose the other one too, so. I I respectfully disagree with um, Anne Anne Marie, when we are talking about options for us to be able to conduct our meeting. There can, there should not be a stipulation because you're already kind of judging against people who are trying to or who will be remote. That's how it will feel like, oh, I cannot come to the meeting because I don't have to give, if there is, if we do for hybrid. It, one people shows up on the meeting and the other seven shows up on the thing, I mean, as a courtesy, we can say to each other, hey, I will not, I will be, I will be remote. But it cannot be a stipulation already because it already feels that. People who are going to be in person, they're already in their subconscious angry because, hey, I'm here, why can't you be here? So if we go for hybrid, it should be, okay, we go for hybrid, it's just like for a couple of months, just move on, let's go, whoever can come in, good for them. And who cannot come in, good for them, at least we're getting the business done, let's pass that. Mode of how we are getting it, like, we just need, um, what is that word in, um. Physics, we just need a medium to get the things done. And we don't need another clause in that medium to make somebody feel bad. That because they're making that choice, they have to give reasons for that, so, um, so that's where I stand.
Thank you, Rashmi.
So in four months, is everything gonna magically disappear and we're gonna all be able to be in person?
We don't know that, no, 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 we don't know that, Anne Marie, in the same way, we don't know if tomorrow. Um, President, Borough's President can, will select or will elect our two appointees. For the unknown that is not going to come after four months, we know that we have four months, right? So let's make that four months work for now, or let's make the next meeting work. We we don't know what if, what if is going to happen after January.
So I think this is something we're gonna have to take one meeting at a time, right, it's not, you know, probably gonna, it's gonna probably change. And if the uh, mayor shuts everybody down, we're not gonna have a choice, so it's, it's always something that's gonna be. Subject to change, um, I don't wanna, Michelle, I wasn't sure if you wanted to say anything, I don't see you, are you here?
I'm here.
Hi, I don't know if you wanna say anything, I know what your position is on the hybrid, I'm not sure if you wanna make any further comments.
Um, it's just not an option for me, so, um, it wasn't an option in the beginning, it's still not an option. Um, I agree with Emily, I I I just don't think it's fair, and for Joseph to comment, um, it is about fairness. Because like I said, I have three children and if I have to get up and find a babysitter. And take them and make all the effort I can to go in person, I don't think it's okay, the people who are going on the computer. It's because they don't want to come, it's not because they can't come, it's two different things. Not wanting to come and not being able to come are two different situations. The, these people don't want to come because of COVID, because of the, the the safety issue that they're having. That's always gonna be like that, so the hybrid is always gonna be the same, always gonna be the same people in person, always gonna be the same people that's going through the computer. If they're gonna do that and and be able to vote and be counted as quorum, what, what I mean, how does that that differentiate? How is that fair to the people who make the effort to actually go down there in person? So i- i- it is about fairness, when people make effort to go down there and we're face to face and we're in person. And somebody's behind the screen doing the same exact thing I'm doing. At the end of the night, they get to go, they get to shut their computer off and they get to go to bed, at the end of the night, we have to leave, go in our cars. Maybe go pick our kids up and then go home. Doesn't seem fair to me.
Right, so I just wanna comment, um, that, you know, i- i- if. If if you're not happy with the hybrid option, it doesn't mean that we stop operating. I mean, if 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 you think it's not fair, uh, then all, with all due respect, then you could. Choose to say, look, I'm gonna just go remote, I I'm deciding that I'm gonna come on for me, one hundred percent remote. If the others wanna appear in person and that's their prerogative, they can, but I'm gonna appear remote, that that, what we need to look at is the bigger picture. Like, we need to look at what our agenda is, how are we going to make our votes, how are we going to make our resolution, you know, how are we gonna operate? So it's more of the bigger picture of getting things done, I think, than the personalities, right? We we're, and and we all, no matter how, look, if I got three hundred votes to get my position. And someone else got nine hundred votes, someone else got fifty, that doesn't matter, we're all here equally and we all have equal say. So the argument about how many votes you have, for me, doesn't mean anything because we're, nobody is any better than anybody else. So that's why I wanna be fair to everyone and I wanna give everyone the opportunity and I respect all of your, um, you know, your comments. Uh, and it's not an easy decision, so, um, it's, and I don't even know if we're gonna get anywhere this evening because. You know, we're we're differing, but we need to take it one step at a time and I wanted to give everyone the opportunity to make their comments. Um, so, am I excluding anyone?
May I just say a couple more things?
Go ahead, Mister Chow.
All right, so once again, we wanna get things done, yes, Michelle may feel it's a matter of fairness. I can agree with you, the problem is, I hope you you're happy that, you know, we have in-person meetings. And that we never get anything done because we don't have the quorum. It's it's about getting things done, and I respectfully disagree with you in terms of equal rights, but maybe all equal here. But we got here differently. I may be representing a lot more parents than some other, someone else, that doesn't make me better, that make me different.
Uh, well, we all have the same vote and each.
How do we get here, how do we get here differently?
That that's nothing to do with that, we all have our vote, you don't have, if I got six hundred votes, I don't have six hundred votes. I have one vote, I am one of seven, which should be eleven representatives, and we all have equal say.
Okay, I I agree with you, the 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 point is, we have to get things done. If we have only seven or eight people coming to our meetings, we may never be able to get anything done, cause maybe if two of us disagree of what, you know, then then nothing gets done. We need to get things done.
I say something bluntly.
Can I say something, Anne Marie, wait, one second, so I, I I think let's, it's, you know what? This is amazing because we all have different cultures, the way we speak, and I know that because I have been a P T A president for two years and district. D twenty five, so, um, president, so I, and I have so many. Um, friends with different background, I'm gonna defend Joseph, when he's talking about numbers. Joe, don't take it that he's saying that he has seven hundred votes, so he thinks he is, he has seven hundred. What he's trying to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, so if you find wrong, just bluntly say it, he's trying to say that there, he rep. His vote is one vote in the council, one vote, but seven hundred people. Together in some way or other believed in what he said, that's why they voted for him, so he, when he comes on the table with one vote. He is in his, behind him are some kind of sentiments of seven hundred. People, and Joe, you also got three hundred something, I mean, I I I think I got less than a hundred.
I just wanna stick to.
Yeah, so I just want you guys to not.
Want you to understand, I have one vote, Mister Chow has one vote.
And I have one vote.
One vote, exactly.
I have one vote, so let's just, you're right, let's just stick with the motion, you're right. No, no, that's right, no, 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 you're right, but because you brought this, you brought the seven hundred, so I just wanted to make sure that we all understand.
Members understand, we all have an equal say.
We do have an equal say, right, we all came differently, but we have an equal say, yes.
Joseph brought it up, actually, he, I mean, no, not you, Mister, Mister, um, yes, Mister Chow brought it up. In his email, that's how we got here, the numbers don't matter, I I I actually, like, I'm I'm gonna say all this numbers and. It it makes people feel offended in some type of way, nobody got here differently. You 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 vote on the, on on the members, they get voted and they and they get it. I wanna.
I think, I think, let's move on, but I I think he meant differently.
Why we're here, and that's not even wanna be the discussion at any other meetings, we're here, this is the group.
We're here as a group and we're here to act together.
I'm sorry, I I feel like.
Just give me one second, yeah, I'm gonna let you talk in a second because I just wanna clear with the C E C members so we have no issues. I'll be, I'll get back to Catherine, and we go ahead and then I'll let Catherine speak.
Speaking bluntly, and everyone here pretty much knows I I speak bluntly. Every single member of this committee is willing to come in person and has been there in person, so we're talking about one person who doesn't wanna go in person, that's Rashmi. So speaking bluntly, six of us are willing to be in person. And Rashmi is wanting a hundred percent remote, Joe Chow is backing her, so there's the laid out, that's how it's laid out, so where are we going from here, let's just get to the vote.
We're beating a dead horse here. Absolutely, that's absolutely disrespectful, and I take no offense to that.
It's honest, it's honest.
No, it was not honest, but whatever, just move on. No, it was not honest, but whatever, just move on.
Let's just stick to the motion. Catherine, I'll let you comment. Uh but I wanna move the meeting along with regard to why we're here. Um go ahead, Catherine.
So the only reason we're all here is for the students, right? And we are a team, and it's it's pretty disappointing to see this. But we're here for for the New York City Public School students of District Twenty-Five. So we are a team, we need to be together either in person or remote. I I'm for in person, but we need to be together as a team in order to be successful. And in order to make decisions and in order to carry out meetings properly. So I don't know, I feel like as a student, I've seen a lot of, a lot of things. Um and of us not beating, being treated fairly. Um so just keep that in the back of your minds, um that that we're here for our students. Um and just whatever the best option is for us.
Thank you, Catherine. Again, I respect your decision, I mean, your 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 opinion, because you are a student and you are the reason. Uh the students, why we are serving on this council. And as you see, we are all adults, uh yet we can disagree. But we can disagree respectfully, and we, you know, I we we all have the right to say what we have to say. Uh but I wanna just remain respectful, and you know. You you point out that, yes, it's a little disappointing, but you know, that is why we're here to work through the issues. And we will work it through as adults. Uh so I'm sure you'll be satisfied at the results, but we just need to work through these kinks. So that's why we're having this discussion right now. Uh but thank you. Mr. Chow, I'm not sure if you still have your hand raised, or if it's Wendy also. Mr. Chow?
Oh no, I'm done talking.
Okay, you could, I don't know how you.
Sorry, I'll put my head down, I'm sorry.
Wendy, did you have a comment? Okay, so does anyone else, I so now, i- if no one, does anyone else have a comment? Okay, Carly, I know you had some questions, and I know you're our administrator, so you're going to have to administer, so I respect your question.
It's okay, I um I will ask those questions as we go along, that's all, cause.
Do you have, well, I asked you, do you have any concerns as the administrator of our meetings on how?
I have a lot of concerns.
Uh hi, in a hybrid situation.
I feel like the hybrid is confusing, me personally, I don't know. What's to stop? I I I agree with Anne Marie in the, again, I was just saying as the admin, I know I have no say. But what's this, I do agree with Anne Marie, maybe not in the stipulation part, but you know, like. I don't know how you would do it, but how how would I know that I go to a meeting, I set up at 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 District Twenty-Five, right? I'm at Linden Place, it is now seven o'clock, and I don't know who's coming, because you're, you have the option of being remote. Or you have the option of being in person, and and now you have also um parents in the building. Or Juliana's coming, and it's just me. Uh like, I how would you finagle this? Like, how do you, there has to be some type of structure.
I'm assuming there's a system, and Juliana, you, you know, maybe you have experience of other. C E Cs have a hybrid option, but I I would assume that those C E C members who appear. Or intend on appearing and not have their absence marked, you know. Um would have to somehow get in touch with Carly to make sure that we, they know that uh they're on, right? Juliana, do you, how would that operate?
I I think that that yes, people would need to email, it would just be a courtesy. So that we know where to, where to expect to see you.
I I would, Julian, I'm sorry, I wouldn't even think that's necessarily a courtesy, because you have to let me know if you're coming. What if nobody shows up, then I would have to make the thing completely remote.
Well, if if it doesn't, correct, if you are not, if the member who's not, and again, this is not decided on.
I know, I know, I'm just thinking, like, if you do it.
This option goes through, there's gotta be a system where the member who's appearing virtually would have to communicate to you that they're on. And that person would have to have the resources to comment and vote. Those are the only, those are the three things, you know, you're there, you can comment, and you can vote.
I would just hope that it would be, you know, not at seven o'clock, or even six o'clock. That's that's kind of my my little bit of fear, because as it is now.
Worried that if you're if you're controlling the public coming on, and we have three hundred members from the public on. You're worried that you're not gonna be able to uh.
No, Joe, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, now that you, if if you take the option of hybrid, hybrid meaning. You going to, you have the option of being able to be on, the the members will be able to be on Zoom, or they can do it in person, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now, how will I know who's coming and who's not coming beforehand? So that I know to alert the public, hey, they're all deciding, they're all, somebody, today, this particular meeting, some, everybody decided that they need to be on Zoom. What's at seven o'clock? That is like almost, I don't, how would, how would I do that?
I I would assume that we would have to come up with some system where that person would have to communicate to you. Uh sometime before the seven o'clock time that they're appearing remotely, correct? I mean, it um that's something that we can kink out, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I think that there haven't been a lot of um councils that have seen this, you know, go into full force yet. There probably wouldn't be an option of doing fully remote, even if all of the C E C members are present. We would probably still need to have an a space for the public to come together. Because that's how it would have been advertised seventy-two, at least seventy-two hours in advance.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Are are there any other concerns, Carly? So the motion that's on the table right now is to do a hybrid. Uh type of meeting where the C E C members would either appear in person. And if they can't appear in person, they would appear remotely so we can uh conduct our business. Um if there are no other comments, then I'd like to put that to the vote. Okay, Carly, can you go through the con, the um the vote, the roll call?
Hybrid, for hybrid, right?
Yes.
Okay, Joseph Di Benedetto?
So again, as much as I, you know, I'm in for in person, I would not want to exclude any council member for. Not being able to, you know, appear. So for that reason, I uh feel that in the best interest of the community, we should go hybrid.
Okay, Wing Yu?
Um I know what I said before about uh for hybrid, but. Um after hearing all your comments, I decided to vote against hybrid.
Anne Marie, Canable?
I'm against hybrid.
Joseph Chow?
I'm for hybrid. I agree with Joe, yeah, for hybrid, I agree with the Joe, the president.
Um I vote for hybrid for to, in our situation, for the, to complete the forum. At least have more chance to complete the forum.
Rashmi Krishnaranj?
I vote for hybrid.
Michelle Frederick?
I'm against it.
So I have four. Four, four, and one, two, three against it.
Okay, so we do not have a quorum on the hybrid option. So that motion is hereby denied.
Okay.
Um now we have one option on the table. Uh are there any motions for a fully in-person? Um. Uh C E C meeting by the council members.
Wait, motion for fully.
So Anne Marie makes the motion for one hundred percent uh in-person meetings. And we're again, we're referring to the council members, correct?
Yeah.
Only.
And anyone second?
Correct.
Any second the motion?
Wendy seconds the motion. Okay, so now, you know, we've been discussing it. Um I'll entertain any this, any further discussion on um why we should vote or not. For the one hundred percent in person. Anne Marie, you made the motion, do you wanna make any further comments?
My only comment is everything I've said before already speaks for my my stance, so I don't need to say anything more, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anne Marie. Uh Wendy, do you wanna say anything?
Well, I I saw one of the parents comment in the chat. That kids are back to school in person, and C E C meeting should go in person too. And I absolutely agree with that, so. And I also agree with Michelle and Anne Marie. I mean, we all have our challenges, but we agreed to do this prior, you know. Despite of all the challenges, we have made our commitment, so therefore. I am continuing to make my commitment and, you know, being in, being at the in-person meetings.
Thank you, Wendy. Does anyone in house uh have a comment? I I I'd like to make a comment, uh and then I'll take it to the others. So I look. I, you know, personally, as a C E C member, my intention is to come in person. I've always had that intention. Um I'm glad that we did not opt for the fully remote. Because I believe, you know, if if the students are in school, I'll make the effort, the message is clear. But you know, I do want business to to go through, and you know, I I, in all fairness to those that are not able to. Appear, I don't know if in good conscience I could say, look, I will exclude those C E C members. Um from um, you know, from uh having a vote or counting towards quorum. Because, you know, I, you know, my personal preference, I'm not afraid of the virus. I happen to be vaccinated, so I, you know, personally will not be excluded, but I can't speak for other members. And you know, I I, you know, I know they were elected, um and I want business to go through. So my goal is for us to conduct our business and, you know, do what we have to do. And vote on what we have to vote on and have enough votes. So although, you know, I personally will have the intention of showing up in person. Uh I don't know if I'm gonna be uh within good conscience going to vote for just one hundred percent in person. But that's my opinion as one of the council members, but I respect whatever decision we vote on. Does anyone else have any comments, Mr. Chow?
May I, may I say something? Alright, um like you said before, um our goal is to get things done. Uh clearly, if we go um either hybrid or fully remote. We should have quorum, we should be able to meet quorum every time, and going in person is exclusive, because there are people who can't make it. I mean, I know some single, like, I I'm lucky, I have a wife who can help me, some somebody may be a single parent. And and they're concerned if they get sick, who's gonna take care of their children? And um I I can't in good conscience voting for something that is exclusive. But I respect everybody's point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Chow. Um does anyone else have any comments? Catherine? Rashmi?
No, I'm done.
Okay.
I'm done speaking after Anne Marie booted me out, that it is because of me, we are having a discussion. So I'm sorry, but you know, I'm just done talking. So let's vote, let's vote whether it passes or not, because I have a lot of work to do, I'm sure, Joe, you too. You are a full, you, I'm sure it's like nine o'clock.
I I I I don't, you know, we we all have different uh opinions, we have to be respectful of each other, and.
But that's not, that was not respect, in my opinion, but let's move on, because then you will disagree, I'll disagree, and then Anne Marie will say something else, so let's just move on.
Look, you have the right to make your comments as a C E C members on this issue, so let's stick to the issue. Um do you have any comments that you'd like to make for or against uh one hundred percent in person by C E C members?
I am against in person for for the reasons that were said before. No need to um repeat from from me and take up more time. Um I will go for hybrid, if that's the motion that's on the table, correct?
No, the motion for hybrid was already denied.
Oh yes, that's right, that's right. See, I can't, I can't even think straight anymore. No, so I am not.
Of elimination.
Okay, that's right. I am no for in person, and my good conscience, I I can do in person right now. For the reasons you mentioned, and Joseph Chow mentioned, we we have to be respectful for all parents.
Thank you, Rashmi. Does any other council member have any comments? Okay, so why don't we go through the roll call vote for one hundred percent in person?
Ready?
Yes.
Joseph Di Benedetto?
Uh I'm sorry, I can't vote for that, no.
Wing Yu? Wendy?
You're muted.
Sorry, I vote, I vote for in-person meeting.
Okay, Anne Marie Canable?
In person.
Joseph Chow?
I vote against it.
Song Yul Lee, Shirley?
Um I can't vote for it, because.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I don't vote for the hundred percent in person.
Okay, and Michelle Frederick?
I vote for in person.
Carly, you didn't take mine.
You have to go to Rashmi.
Sorry, I Rashmi, you know what, I I had. You said you wasn't, I'm so sorry.
Even if I put my camera on, you can't see me, because I'm in my daughter's room.
No, I wrote it, I had already wrote it when you said no, you wasn't voting for it.
Okay, so officially, yes, I. I said no for hundred percent in person, yes.
Okay, okay, I gotcha. So that's.
Okay, so we are.
In three for yes, and one, two, three, four, for against it.
So we don't have a quorum on that issue as well. So we're back to square one. Um we need to um somehow work through this. Um so at the time, uh I I asked you, Juliana, I mean, we have, we've been conducting in-person meetings. Um we, you know, the rules haven't changed. Um I don't. We have not ruled on one hundred percent in person, so I don't think we can penalize anyone. If they don't, if if they don't show up at the next meeting. Uh but I need to, you know, we need to figure this out and how we're going to move forward with our meetings. So I'm assuming that October is going to proceed in person, correct?
Yeah, you would, since you, I mean, you were sort of coming, you were coming together tonight to vote on. Like new options that were before you, you didn't vote on any, none of those motions passed, so you would continue as it's.
So we're gonna continue the way we've been operating last month. We, you know, we have uh a- a- until uh. Uh we have a quorum, and we take on any new motion at that time. Um perhaps at our October meeting. Uh you know, I'm shooting for the stars, we may have two new representatives. And we may be able to take on the vote another time. But a- as far as we're concerned, my understanding on the Roberts rules, we have to continue to operate the way we've been operating until this change.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a question on that, uh one second, Carly. Um so let's say if uh one of the members, they're not able to make it, and they give whatever notices. Uh need to be given, and they have to log in remotely because they cannot make it in person. Would they be, would their vote be counted as quorum, because the new law can, new law says that you can do. Or we can't, because of the C E C, we did not vote.
So the 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 extension on the rule says the C E C decides how to how to move forward on that issue. So we have not made a decision, right? So right now, we did not decide, uh i- i- if you don't show up. And you choose to show up remotely, uh it's not gonna count towards qualms, my understanding.
It would, so that means in July, the our first meeting. It would. So that means in July, the, our first meeting, did we decide officially that we will be conducting in person or we just went with the flow because that's the way the state law was and we did not officially decide, if we didn't officially decide, we can't decide that right now, right?
Well, my understanding is that in July, we went according to the governor's mandate that we had to appear in person. But we did discuss it at our meeting and we did discuss that we respect the public, that if the public could not attend, we would give them the option of appearing virtually. So I mean, that still stands. We're just talking about a very specific thing is how we operate as a C E C. So July, August, September, you know, they went on. Even though the rules changed in September, we continued the way we were operating because we have to vote on it. And unfortunately, we could not all come to agreement on any of the options. So I believe we need to continue to move on the way we were moved on, moving on last month.
Okay, maybe, maybe this is a discussion Juliana can do research on it because I think that there is a loophole here. We, even though we continue to do these meetings and made discussions, I think if we officially did not decide that there will be remote options, will not have a quorum, we can't make that decision right now. I think, I think there is, there is some, there, there's a twitch to it, but this is not a discussion at nine o'clock on a Thursday, but yes, on September, October, before October meeting, maybe we can get some more clarification on that. Do you know what I'm talking about, Juliana?
Can you say it one more time?
Okay, so we went for a hundred percent remote to in person because the state law changed that all the open meetings law will go back in person, right? So we continue to do that. But in that open meetings law, it is stated that you can go remote and vote. There is, there is an option there as long as you disclose the, disclose the address. It can be address of a parking lot or whatever it is. So it is, it is there, remote option is there. So it's not taken off the table. So C E C cannot make that decision of to take off the table. So it is there, but now as we were still discussing, the law itself changed and say, hey, now you can go back to remote as it was in July, June, and give us few months and we are giving you a few months to parse this out. So as that law changed back to, to whatever it was in July, June, that means that we go back to the option of remote. So the original law gave the option of remote with the voting. So we can't take that off the table just because we are going in person. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Right.
We can take that off the table. Now, the good thing with this new change of law is the only thing that they did, and I know why they did that, because people really voted and voiced their opinion that they do not want to disclose their location because in the middle of pandemic, if I disclose my location, I don't want 10 members to come and throw something at my windshield because they think that they are against it. So based on the fear of what's going on, the law made it saying that, okay, you don't have to disclose the location. So you can just go remote. So they make that small stipulation to the law. So we can't not take a member who is remote and count their vote towards quorum. Because that is the original part of the law itself. So we cannot as a C E C do that. We cannot change, make the change to the open states law. I know for sure that's, that's a fact.
Juliana, per our conversation with Shoshana Bulae, who's the, who's the author of the memo that you, that you circulated that, that has Article four seventeen in it, okay? She specifically said in conversation that come July, when the order for ended in June, it reverted back to in-person meetings. So whatever was in place before is off the table and it is in person. It was reinstated in August that we could go now with an option to go, you know, if, if whatever body so chooses. But that July, August, before that came out, those options that were present for everybody, any, any public meeting were taken off the table and in person became the standard. And that is per Shoshana Bulae. She's happy to speak to anybody. I can certainly provide her number to Carly. I'll give it to Carly to give that to everybody. She's more than welcome to discuss the open meetings law of New York State.
Okay, no, that's good. That's good. You're right, Anne Marie. One second, you're right, Anne Marie. Open meetings law went back to in person, but that open meeting law in person had a stipulation of remote. So Shana is not going to say that stipulation is going to go away if it reverses. That was always there.
Provided you.
No, so that's the glitch.
Disclosed your location.
No, 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 that. Listen, 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 listen.
Listen, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna argue about something that.
Yeah, something that we can't argue about right now, yeah.
I think that what's important to note is that what the state did was opened up your options. It gave you more options. Your conversation tonight has, has not resulted in you choosing those additional options. And now, now there is sort of, I think what is the way I see the conversation that, that you are having right now, is the question about what is in the C E C's power to, to limit. And like, that's the conversation that like Anne Marie is referencing with the Committee on Open Government. And the Committee on Open Government is saying, like, this is, like, we're not telling you what to do. We're telling you all of the options that you can do. FACE has said very clearly that we don't want to see council members being excluded from business that we, like FACE has said very clearly, like, please have grace with each other and please, like, please take advantage of these options to be remote. But these are, you know, at the end of the night, the way I understand it, these are very strong recommendations from FACE. And there, you know, the decision about how you operate still lies with you. Now, if you, you know, want me to gain any further clarity on that, you know, in writing, I can. But that's, that's the way I understand it.
So that's my understanding as well. The decision is ours. Unfortunately, we are not all in agreement. But we need to move forward. So I, you know, I, and, and we have to continue to operate. So we will have our October meeting. I would hope that we have six members present so we can move forward and conduct business. But if we don't, we don't. I, 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 I mean, I, I'm not going to force somebody to do something that we're not all in agreement on. So unfortunately, we did not receive a quorum on any of the three options. So we have to respect that and we have to, you know, try to move forward in the best interest of our community. And I, I believe we should take it on at our meeting and hope that we have six members attend that meeting. I mean, we've had, I, I know, Anne Marie, people have been showing up. So we've operated in June, July, I'm sorry, July, August. Unfortunately, we did not operate in September because there was an excuse absence, but I would hope that October, we are six members, so we can move forward. And I would hope that this whole thing, you know, I, I, I don't, I agree with Michelle, it's not going away. So we need to learn how to deal with it and I will respect any further motions at our next meeting, but I don't think we're going to make any progress this evening. And, you know, again, this is another point that I want to make that Juliana, we need the borough president to cooperate. This is another, you know, call out that, look, we have a C E C here that stagnated. So if we have two more members, if those two members were here tonight, we probably would have voted on a, a way of operating because the, the votes were closed, right? So not the, you know, the remote, but I, I see that the hybrid and the in-person were very close. So again, I probably, as an individual, it might, you know, would have said, I want to make everybody come in person, but I can't in good faith, you know, make that representation to the community. So, and I, I respect all of your decisions, but let's just, you know, move forward and try to, you know, deal with it at our next meeting and hope that we all attend. Does anyone else have any comments?
Leon, can you just comment on those borough president?
Sure, sure. I will, so I spoke with my colleague in intergovernmental affairs. So like at the DOE, there's like an office that specifically like deals with elected officials. And so he asked me to double check that all of the applicants had been, you know, like completely done on DOE's side and forwarded to the borough president's office. And so I did that and there are three applications for borough president appointee positions. There's two positions that need to be appointed. Those positions are, are with the borough president. So the next step is for us at the DOE to follow up again with the borough president's office. You know, it's not, it's a separate agency. It's a completely separate agency. We can't force the borough president's hand. But that's sort of the relation, like that's sort of why I was talking to intergovernmental affairs because like their job is to have good relationships with all of these other offices and, and try to get you somebody appointed.
Understood. You know, I, I see that Rushme is gone. I hope she wasn't offended. Like, it's not about personalities, guys. We, you know, we're not here because we like each other necessarily. We're here because we represent our constituents and we need to be respectful of that. So I have no hard feelings against anyone. I hope that no one has hard feelings. We all have the right to make our opinions known and we all have the right to, you know, express our feelings. So I hope nobody got offended this evening. And Catherine, I hope you understand that, you know, and even adults could disagree and sometimes, you know, it doesn't work out the way people want, but we have to be respectful of that. Life goes on. We need to continue to move forward. Any other comments, Wendy?
I felt kind of bad. I feel like I'm, I was the swing vote on this.
No, it, it, not really. I mean, it was close because we're four, it wouldn't, I, it's a tough call. You know, when you have so many options, it's a tough call, but you know, it, it's clear. It's not going to go, you know, one way or other, but we need to figure out how we're going to operate. So we don't have a choice right now. Like I say, it, you know, it, it's, we need to move forward. I, I mean, all the members here have appeared in person. Rushme wasn't at the last meeting. If she doesn't come to the next meeting and we're all present, we can still act and move forward as a council and, and, and get business done. We're just not going to all be in agreement on whether we're going a hundred percent remote, a hundred percent hybrid, in a hybrid or actually a hundred percent in person because we just didn't agree on it. But as we stand right now, if you're not appearing at our next meeting, you're not, your vote is not counting and you're not counting towards quorum. That's my understanding, correct?
I have a quick question. So we are done with Pamela and another person is Mr. M.
Pamela, Pamela is out. So now I don't know how long, that's another thing we need to take up. We need to, how long was that going to take, Juliana, in terms of putting the public notice out there that we have a vacancy?
I think Carly can, like, it's, it's, there's a, there's a template, so I don't know.
I do that. I have, I already have one made up one for past previous ones. I just send it out again.
Cool. So Carly will send that notice out and everybody will, you know, advertise to your P A's to community members. People have to have a student in D twenty-five. That's the only requirement. And K through eight student in D twenty-five.
Is it necessary for us to put a time limit on when applications have to be submitted by X date and when we have to take the vote? Or we do it as first come, first served?
I would, it would be really great if, like, if Carly can put the notice out tomorrow, then you could call for a special meeting prior to, like, like fifteen minutes prior to your October sixth meeting. So at six fifteen, you could call for a special meeting and interview any applicants that you've received thus far. And if you have an applicant, then during that calendar meeting, you can vote on the, the person. So I would, you know, I would put a very tight deadline on your flyer right now. And then if you don't get anybody, you could of course extend the deadline. You're required to fill the vacancy within sixty days, but it's very, sometimes it's difficult to fill. So you just, you need to just work hard at, at getting applicants.
Understood.
And so I have a question. So another, another member, Mr. M, is also in a very similar situation with Mr. Pamela. So what? I'm just bluntly speaking.
So Mr. M has two unexcused absences. I don't, I don't think that this special meeting, does this, does this special meeting count towards an excuse?
Doesn't count, but Carly already sent him a warning letter, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. So if Mr. M doesn't appear at your October sixth meeting, then you will, like Carly will bring the resolution to the October sixth meeting and you will vacate his seat. You will vote to vacate his seat per state law on October sixth. And then you will then be advertising, you know, hopefully you will have filled one of your vacancies, but you could potentially then be advertising for two or three vacancies because Rushme also has two unexcused absences. And if you as a body drop below quorum, then you will need to have, you'll need to apply for a, you'll need to ask the chancellor for special permission to have a designate me and the chancellor will appoint somebody from FACE to vote for, like, to help you fill a vacancy. So there will be a member from FACE that will have a letter, a certified letter that says we are, we are like helping the council vote for, have a sixth vote towards, towards filling the vacancy.
So at our, at our October meeting, Mr. M and Rushme's potential vacancy can come on the table if we have a quorum present, is that correct?
Absolutely.
So if it's the third meeting and they don't, if, if they don't show up or not, don't have excusable absence, we can vote at that meeting on whether or not there are vacancies. So we potentially could have two more vacancies on our October meeting.
Yep.
Provided we have a quorum present at that meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Does everyone understand that?
Yep. Can I just say something, Joe, before we finalize?
Yes, go ahead, Emma.
I just want to, to clarify for my fellow council members and for Catherine. I really do apologize and I wish Rashmi was here to hear this. And I know those that, like council that do speak to her can please convey this to Juliana. It was not my intention to call her out. How we feel is how we feel. I was just bluntly stating, this is what the picture is. It's frustrating. And I just wanted to point out that what we're saying here is we do have six members willing to be in person and it is Rashmi who's not willing to be in person. I didn't know that saying that that way would insult her because that is the way she feels. So it was not my intention to insult her. So I just want everyone to be clear on that. I do respect her position. I understand where she's coming from. I don't agree, as we all know, but I, it, it was worth saying so that we put into perspective that we do have a full council almost that is willing to be in person. That was my only intention. So I apologize for insulting her. I apologize if anybody was offended by that. Thank you.
Duly noted. I don't, I, I, I didn't take it as an offense, but you know, people are somewhat sensitive on those issues, but you know, we, we are adults and we need to deal with, you know, this is part of life. But I hope she didn't take offense at it, you know, she is a representative of her constituents. So she has a right like everyone else does. You know, so, you know, she just signed off. I, I, I don't know what the issue is, but, you know, I would hope that she is a little bit more responsible in her duties as a C E C member. And if she decides to move forward, that she appear or, you know, at least makes up some type of effort for our next meeting. Catherine, I was very impressed by your comments and I thank you for those comments. It's always, always a pleasure to have you part of our group. Catherine, I was very impressed by your comments and I thank you for those comments, it's always, always a pleasure to have you part of our group. And I'm very proud of you for your comments this evening, thank you for, uh, contributing.
Thank you, I think, I don't know, these meetings are really important and, um, what goes on is really important, so thank you guys for listening to me, it means a lot.
I appreciate that, and everyone else who's, who's given their opinion, I really respect your opinion. And I don't mean to, you know, um, make anyone's opinion any less than the others, so. Um, I was hoping that we would come to some type of term, but, you know, that's part of life and we need to move forward. And, uh, if anyone here feels the need to bring on the motion at the next meeting, then do so, every, you know, every month is different. We, things change, your opinion might change, we, whatever you want may happen, but, um, it didn't happen tonight. Is there anything else that we have to comment on, or are we okay with any motions to adjourn the meeting? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Chow, I see you, I, are you talking, you're muted? Mr. Chow? You have to unmute yourself. Carly, can you unmute him?
Yeah, I was, uh.
Wouldn't hear you.
You hear me? Yeah, well, I think the host has not muted me, I said I want a couple more comments, number one, I feel the same way Wendy does, I feel kind of sad, we couldn't reach an agreement. I thought if I had, there were three options, I wanted to go for two of them, we would be able to reach somewhere, because my concern is. Um, we need to have six people, what if someone else can't make it? I mean, I'm committed to coming in no matter what, I mean, I didn't say that, you may have had a hybrid, I would come in because I signed up for it. And, and you know, uh, I just feel a little sad, maybe one thing we need to work together is how to work as a team.
Absolutely. That's it, so, so we're not dismantled by any means, we're still moving forward, we are still a council. And we are going to be at our next meeting in hopes that we're all, you know, as many, you know, we're, we're six here right now. We're hoping that six here will be present, um, and if not, we have to respect that and, you know, we'll deal with it. Um, so, I, I don't know, did we agree on a location for our October meeting? Did we say was at the district office?
I already put the permit in for the district office.
Okay, and what date is that?
Six at six thirty.
Okay, so, um, we, I, I, I know this is a very particular meeting about the, the two issues we discussed. I know we had, uh, discussing, Michelle, you weren't present at that last meeting, there were some people that were saying, maybe we should go back to the seven P M meeting. I don't know, that's something we may take on at the next meeting, but as, for purposes of this special meeting. Uh, we've, uh, discussed the options and I don't think we have anything further to, uh, discuss for this special meeting. Unless there are any other motions for any discussion. I'm rambling on, it's been a long day. So are there any motions to adjourn the, okay, so, uh, adjourned motions to adjourn, does that come from, sorry, Juliana, you can't make the most.
I was saying that somebody should make it.
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, so Wendy made the motion.
Second.
I seconded.
Okay, so I didn't, you said it first, Mr. Chow or Anne Marie, I don't.
Anne Marie, Anne Marie, Anne Marie, ladies first.
Okay, so the meeting is hereby adjourned, I thank you for your time, always. Uh, and I'm sure our community thanks you for your time and we'll see you in October.
Yeah, that's just a couple short weeks.
All right.
Alright, everyone.